My fellow citizens of Darty County, we continue to make strides in fighting the spread of the COVID-19 virus here in our community, but we need your help. If you or someone you know is eligible to receive the vaccine, as your county commission chairman, I'm asking you, please consider getting the vaccine. Together, we can fight the spread here in Darty County and make us happier, healthier, and stronger.
Welcome to the Doherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District 1, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District 2, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District 3, Commissioner Plinton Johnson; from District 4, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District 5, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District 6, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Doherty County Commission meeting.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Go ahead and call on board the Doherty County Work Session for March 8th, 2021. Let's begin with the roll call. A note for the record that Commissioners Newsom, Edwards Johnson, and Gray are present. Do we have Commissioner Gaines and Jones on the line?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Gordon. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Minutes. Minutes of the February 15th regular meeting, February 22nd work session, and February 22nd special called meeting. Is there, excuse me, any comments, questions, or discussion? They're being noted. We'll move on to delegations. We have quite a number of delegations today, and so in the interest of brevity and efficiency, I'm going to limit everybody to 10 minutes on their presentation today. And our first presentation is from Janet Dyke with the Albany-Doherty Economic Development Commission, present to update the commission with a quarterly report. Good mor—there she is.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and those of you who are not able to attend here in person. I would ask that the slide presentation start at Slide 1 if possible. That's the end. I really wanted to come today and just present to each of you kind of a concept of what we have been working towards in this first quarter and what we will continue to work towards. It is our goal to present to each of you once a quarter to kind of provide an update of what our communities' dollars are going towards. So with that, we'll begin the slideshow. If you could turn it to the next slide, please, sir. On this first slide, you'll see, when you think about the Albany-Doherty Economic Development Commission, you think of several different types of roles that we serve in the community. And this word cloud here is kind of some of the words that we focus on when we think about who we are in the community and what our purpose is. And really, you'll see at the center of that is the Albany-Doherty Economic Development Commission. And so that really just wanted to share with you kind of all the different areas that we see ourselves touching in the community. Next slide, please, sir. So our goals for 2021, and this is just for the first quarter, really to establish relationships, engage with our local businesses, and evaluate our workforce needs. All of these are going to be ongoing, obviously, throughout the years, but really kind of establishing relationships. With me coming on board, it was important for us to begin that part of it first. And then, as a part of that, you would also have your engaging the local businesses and the workforce needs during our stakeholder meetings. Next slide, please. You'll see a bunch of acronyms on this slide, so bear with me and I'll break those down for you. But the key idea is to see that our role and kind of my role as coming in as the new president is to establish those relationships with the key stakeholders in various capacities, as well as those that are outside of our community. Our existing industries are a big partner of ours as well that we've been working to establish those relationships with, as well as our community partners such as the Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Downtown Development Authority, the Small Business Development Center, the Department of Economic Development, DCA, and our utility providers as they service each different area of the community. Next slide, please. Part of what we needed to evaluate as an organization before we could go out is to identify who we are and where we were and what we had, and so that we can make sure that we are sharing this information correctly and fluidly and knowledgeably. So part of that has been evaluating our existing leases that we have in place and how those leases are structured, the bonds that are in place, how those bonds are structured. Are there any additional ways that we could look at engaging in the future? Small businesses, obviously, has been a big factor of ours. Recently, we were able to save a small business from relocating to Donaldsonville. This was a business that had seven employees. They purchased a building in our community that had been on the tax rolls and had been available for quite some time. They purchased that building for $725,000. They are making over $200,000 worth of improvements to the building, and they're going to be hiring 12 new employees. So within the first quarter, we were able to maintain that business in our community. Yes, our Miller Coors and our Procter &amp; Gambles are important. As a matter of fact, I had a meeting with Mr.—the plant manager of P&amp;G this last week, but these small businesses are what make up our community, and attention to these businesses is important. So that's kind of some of the things that we're working on. Also, working on our policies and procedures within our office, we've hired a new staff member who will come on board on Monday. Her name is Ms. Shannon Smith, and she'll be joining us as our admin coordinator and will help us keep our office in order, work with us on our social media and marketing, both Reedy and I on that. So we're really excited to have her coming on board. We're working on our marketing. Obviously, we've got to step it up with COVID and the way things are right now. So we are working on hopefully getting a new website because we are kind of antiquated with our website. We're also working on our social media campaigns as well. And so just really trying to be very intentional with the information that's shared and sharing information that is needed in our community. As a matter of fact, we're sharing information about grant opportunities for people that are looking to invest or need additional gap funding. One thing in particular that we're really focusing on is minority grant opportunities and sharing that information on our website and all of our social media outlets as well. And then our staff structure. So as you know, Reedy has been in our office for quite some time, and she's kind of come up a little bit more and has kind of been assisting me with some of our projects and some of the different things that kind of go along with those. And as part of that, our new staff member will also kind of take on a different role in more so of the marketing and advertising. Next slide, please. So you all are aware of the Outdoor Network. This happened last year. This is a great save for our community. We continue to work with this organization as they look at possible other expansions and our other things that they can do in the community. And this is a good example, again, of just going out and talking to the individuals. They were having some problems with some people coming in on their property, and we were able to go out and talk to them and help get some added security, additional lighting to one of their facilities that makes them happy. And now they're looking at some other areas of investment in our community as well. But this is our role, is to service this. This is a great, big project for us. This is going to be one that's taken a blighted building, but there's so many subsectors that coincide with this too. And that's, again, our role as the EDC is to make sure we're encompassing all of those. Next slide, please. New projects. This is a picture of a groundbreaking that we had, I think, a week ago. I don't know. It seems as if the time is flying. But this is a groundbreaking for a community store that is going to come in off of Clark Avenue. And it's going to have not only your convenience store, but it's also going to have several different stores that are going to come on the exterior of that site. So we're really excited about that. It's going to have a huge economic impact in our community, and especially in the East Albany community that could definitely use that love and affection over there. So we're continuing to try to work with these businesses as we can. Our role is to vet these prospects for you guys so that when they come in, we can ensure that they are a true prospect and that they have done their due diligence. And we serve as that mediator for that. We've completed four state RFPs in the last three months. Actually, let me retract that. We've completed five. We submitted one on Friday of last week. As you know, we are somewhat hesitant to share that information because oftentimes these do not come to fruition. But I think it's important for each of you to know that we are sharing the information, and the more we share, the more spotlight we'll get from our state partners. And again, just to reiterate, we're kind of working with our existing businesses and our state partners just to make sure we stay on the forefront of their minds. Next slide, please. I just saw this, and we're at the end of the slideshow. So the workforce. The workforce. As we have these conversations with our existing businesses, we're identifying what their workforce needs are. Where is the gap? What can we do to help bridge that gap? And how can we strengthen the workforce here? What kind of subcategories and subsectors can we bring to support the industries that we have in place? So we're working with our partners at Albany Tech and Darton and, well, excuse me, Albany State now that tells you how old I am. Albany State and some of our other partners like 4C Academy to make sure that we have that workforce pipeline. Also, working with the Marine Base to ensure that we're getting the correct employees out there as well. Youth Apprenticeship Program, I'm really excited about this. I'm sure most of you have seen King Randall and some of the work that he's doing. I know our 4C Academy has that Youth Apprenticeships Program, but we're also going to be working with King Randall to get his guys that are there within his organization to tour some of our facilities so that they can see the jobs that are available in our community. And we're just excited to be able to serve as a partner in that capacity. And I think that's the last slide now that I've asked all the ones to be. Can you go to the next one since I'm obviously having issues with that? Are there any questions for us as an organization? Obviously, confidentiality is somewhat of an issue, but I will answer anything that I can.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Dyke?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And this is back home for you.
Yes, sir.
And I look forward to working with you in the years and years ahead.
Thank you, sir.
And I just have a comment. I just want to say, reiterate what Commissioner Newsom's saying, with a new face. Two things I kind of heard which I like, that look like you're treating all businesses the same. When I mean that, like, you're not just focusing on one particular area. I see, you know, with the convenience store as well as that Miller Coors guy. And I guess that's what I was really looking for that. And I appreciate you bringing it to the table. You said something about the young man that you was going to do the chores with, to take the kids.
Yes, sir. King Randall.
So even down to that, that's going back to the basic ground root of it, and I just want to commend you for that. Because you got to have the sensitivity that all of us in the same economical status thing together trying to grow. So I appreciate that. I mean, you know, the sensitivity.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I yield to Commissioner Gaines. I think she was going to say—
Oh, Commissioner Gaines?
Yes. Yes, good morning. And I too welcome you to Albany. Been reading about you and watching from the sidelines, so welcome. I am—I'm perfectly happy with the structure, the formal structure we have with respect to representation of the county on your board. However, I'm looking for and hoping for a mechanism to include some of the other thoughts on the commission, and I would certainly love to be able to share some of my thoughts with you as the year goes on about what I'm thinking about economic development in the community. And I hope that will be of value to you and that you will make that happen in some way.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Just so you'll know, Commissioner Gaines, we are trying to meet with each of the stakeholders to include the county commissioners individually. We've been somewhat limited with COVID restrictions, but I would be glad to meet with you in whatever capacity, whether it be virtually, you know, on the telephone or in person. I would love the opportunity to do that.
I will look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Gray, Johnson.
I reiterate the—
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
I'll yield to you, Commissioner.
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
Okay. I would like to welcome Ms. Dyke back home as well. She's a homegirl. And I think we're fortunate to have—I think we're fortunate to have her here in Doherty County. She and I talked a little bit. And I think—and I'm very excited about some of the thoughts she shared with me where the PDC is headed. I think this high is going to pay dividends for Albany-Doherty County in the future. And again, Ms. Dyke, welcome back home.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, a welcome, first of all. Certainly reiterate that. Appreciate what you're doing. And I really appreciate you providing a level of transparency as much as possible in your role around the number of RFPs that you've submitted. I think that's important because there is a lot of work that goes on before those are even submitted. And it does show that there's a lot of potential energy here when RFPs are going out. So it's very encouraging, and I do appreciate that level of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I got a question or two for you. Good morning, again.
Good morning, sir.
All right, and welcome to our meeting. Outdoor Network, we've read a lot about it, but can you kind of talk about how it started and then how it's going?
Well, being that I was not a part of the original conversations, it was my understanding that they were looking at some sites in our community, and the interim president at the time also showed them the McGregor facility. And so that building is one that, as you all know, has been a blighted facility in our community for quite some time. I mean, I remember when I was a child and it was operational, and I was not a child just yesterday. So the fact that they are taking what has become a blighted facility, they are remediating a lot of asbestos and other things that are there that will help clean up the overall area is a wonderful thing. It's going to be going on South Flappy. Again, that's another box that's able to be checked there with that development. The PDA really took the forefront in that negotiation, and they did what was needed to make it come to fruition. That is a partnership between the state, the PDA, the community, the city. There are so many different aspects of that. And I kind of just get to come in and see it all come to fruition, so I'm very fortunate. They will be hiring 92 employees, and they are going to, again, take that McGregor building that has been there for quite some time and kind of redevelop that facility.
So there's a manufacturing and distribution going on?
Yes, sir. There are several different umbrellas that coincide with their overall network. And so you've got about five different entities that kind of all fall within underneath that. So in addition to that facility, they're also working on their existing facilities as well and potentially looking at maybe some others too right now. So it's not only been a save for us, it's also a growth opportunity for us as a community.
So you're talking about minority grants that you've been looking into, and I know there's a big move in the nation towards minorities, inclusion. Is there a way for EDC to work in that area as well?
Most definitely. So our demographics in our community obviously call for us to make sure that we have a focus on minorities, if you will. One thing that we are doing is sharing that information of availabilities on our website and on our social media. Our website right now is somewhat limited as to what we can maintain on it, and that's just because of the sheer age of it. So we are looking to hopefully get a new website coming soon. But we are sharing when we find opportunities for funding that are legitimate opportunities that have been vetted and that are resources for our businesses. And we're sharing that information on our social media. We have Facebook, we have Instagram, we have Twitter, and we have LinkedIn. And we're making sure that we share that information. I'm plugged into a minority business community and have several just mentors that really have plugged me into some different ways that we can get involved. Another thing that we're going to be looking at doing in this next quarter is doing a business, like starting a business. When you have that business, what are some things that need to coincide with that? And having a workshop specific to that. Obviously, that would be open to everyone, but would hope that the minority community would also participate.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Dyke, on behalf of the commission, we're very, very happy to have you here and happy to see the leadership and the direction. And I've personally enjoyed the time that we've had together and the responsiveness that you've displayed to the will of the commission and to the Economic Development Commission and to the needs of the community. Very thankful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Tommy Gregor, Executive Director with Chi-Haw Park and Zoo, President to provide an update on the Artesian Alliance, Chi-Haw Park and Zoo, Flint River Aquarium, and Thranatiska. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, and the Clerk, all those here and virtually as well. Wanted first to thank this commission for its appointment, its first appointment directly to the Chi-Haw Park Authority. Y'all had appointed Scott Steiner. He's been an excellent member and attended every single meeting we've had, either in person or virtually, and has really provided some good guidance and input into our processes out there. And wanted to thank that. In response to COVID, I did want to update this commission sort of on what we've done at all of our facilities and through our partnership with Chi-Haw, Flint River Aquarium, and Thranatiska. We have been able to manage our way through this pandemic, keeping our employees safe, keeping our public safe that have come out to our places once we were able to reopen. And out of our over 70 staff members that we have across all three organizations, we've not had any severe cases or incidents there. We have assisted both the county and the city in acquiring face masks and shields through just our network of being an authority and finding vendors that can provide those materials. And then also, all three of our organizations qualified for round one of the PPP program, so that was able to offset some of our revenue loss while we were shut down in those early months of the pandemic. Chi-Haw was able to open back up first and start seeing people come back out because of the outdoor setting we had. River Aquarium opened second. Once again, we could make sure that we could maintain social distance and keep our place clean and sanitized for the public. And then Thranatiska came up. We did have to operate as an essential business in there because we had living animals that we had to care for. And in the state guidelines, we were considered an essential function from the standpoint that we had to care for those collections of animals. We also maintained our archives for the city and the county, again, during that time, and the need for remote access to records became that much more critical. So we were able to maintain our archives and keep that up and running for all those that we service through the Archives Program. In that, for the second round of PPP funds, the Chi-Haw Park and Zoo as well as Flint River Aquarium qualified for second round funding in there. And so that's been really essential for that loss revenue that we've seen. We actually were able to show about a 60-plus percent loss in revenue at the aquarium and over 70% loss in revenue in '19 over '20 at Chi-Haw. Our attendance is coming back strong. We're beginning to see school groups come back now that schools have begun some of the in-person sessions, and we're seeing some of the small groups come back out there. And because of what we've done in the community and because of this commission's support, the city commissions and other support, we were able to apply for an RK Mellon Foundation Grant, and we received $100,000. grant and we received $100,000 in COVID response to be able to pivot our educational programs into a virtual setting so that we could still provide our learning opportunities to Southwest Georgia students virtually. That $100,000 brought along with it, we were able to raise another $65,000 in private funds to come in along with that and put another 65 in kind. The significance of that grant is RK Mellon Foundation typically funds Western Pennsylvania, but we do have a connection to them through Pineland Plantation and some of their trustees and board members come down here. But just the significance of that grant, over 500 organizations were sent invitations. Out of that 500, 235 submitted applications. Only 83 were asked to submit a final application and out of those in the end, only 37 were funded. And we were one of the 37 that was funded through that grant program and that just speaks to our staff, the community support we get and the quality of programs that we offer as well. So the partnership has been a key part of bringing everybody together. We've been able to see economies of scale, sharing staff across all three organizations, combining fundraising efforts and combining membership efforts. We just rolled out our new membership program where you can buy one membership to all three organizations and have one pass that gets you in everywhere and gets you all the discounts. That's been very popular as we've rolled it out. We continue to do education programs, share maintenance staff, administrative staff across all three places and continue to see that grow. We're looking forward to what that can bring in the future as well. Another effort that we've embarked on is a master plan for all three. We're doing one master plan for all three organizations. We're getting close to finishing up Chiha's, then we'll move on to the River Aquarium and Thronatiska. And by the September, we'll be able to roll that full plan out, but we appreciate our community support for that and we'll be bringing some more updates back to y'all in the future as well. So again, I wanted to thank y'all for y'all's support through splash funds, through surplus equipment, through in-kind efforts, every way that we can get our community support all of our facilities. It just improves the quality of life and improves our economic development contribution as well. We're part of that process too because to bring in those industries, we need to show that we have quality of life in our community. Again, just want to thank y'all and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. The grant type, you said, what kind is that? RK?
It was Richard King Mellon Foundation. They typically fund Western Pennsylvania and they put out a proposal, they spent over $5 million in grants supporting the COVID-19 response when it first kicked in and they wanted things that would respond immediately to the pandemic. And again, with schools shutting down completely in the early days, we still needed to provide content to those students somehow and this gave us that opportunity.
Was there a match to it or it was just a straight?
We, it was, it was a straight grant, but we figured it would bolster our case if we could match the funds. So we were able to go raise additional $65,000 to go with that as long and with our $65,000 in kind.
In legislature in the House, in the Capitol, this lodging tax that's coming up for vacation rentals, Airbnb, kind of being a facilitator for collecting those extra taxes, how is that affecting, how will that affect Chiha?
It won't at this point. We're still considered recreational camping and campgrounds and those aren't in that bill as far as I know.
Okay, okay. And finally, the Artesian Alliance is getting along, huh?
Absolutely.
All right. The membership pass you talked about, when we open up Radium and have swimming, is it possible to add Radium to that package?
Be glad to talk to y'all. I think, I think it makes good sense with the anchors at each end of the trail opportunities that we have with Chiha through downtown to Radium. And certainly I think operationally, we need to look at some things because, you know, I know in the plans, there's some consideration to rentals and events and things which, you know, we are already doing those things. So I think we might could offer some assistance with that.
Okay, could be a good conversation. So you're saying ride and take the trail from Chiha to Radium?
Absolutely.
Events down there, backup? Good, good thinking, good talking. All right, thanks.
Very good.
Question?
Yes, Commissioner Gaines.
Yes, please. Mr. Gregor, good morning.
Good morning.
I understand the current COVID relief bill that's in process of approval will contain money for, I suppose you call it the entertainment venues?
Yes ma'am.
Will all three, will the entire Tri-State benefit from that money, be able to benefit from that money?
Possibly, we're looking into that now. There has been some restrictions depending on what programs you've participated in throughout this whole time. So if we qualify, we certainly would be applying for those funds.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Gregor, thank you very much, we appreciate your presentation and dedication to the community. Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from William Wright, Representative of Afram Tech, Inc., President to update the commission on the New Deal proposal.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Madam Clerk and Mr. McCoy, Mr. Lee. We want to thank you and we'll give you an update on where we are with the Green New Deal. First of all, we thank you for helping us with the workshop that's scheduled for tomorrow at Robert Cross Park. And we're going to provide some of this more detailed information as a part of this presentation. So page one basically gives you an idea about what this is, diversity, inclusion, economic development and equal opportunity. Going to page two, we've submitted this information to our congressional delegation, we've had some conversation with them about it and Commissioner Gaines just raised a question about the SBO, we're going to discuss that tomorrow. That's a shelter venue, essentially anyone or any entity that's in the entertainment industry eligible for these grants. Now, what we're going to explain tomorrow is that there's a caveat, the SBO does not have its opportunity to double dip. What that means is when Commissioner Gaines raised a question, if an SBO participates in the paycheck program, they cannot benefit from the shelter venue program. The shelter venue program is far more beneficial than the paycheck program because the shelter venue program provides twice as much return. In other words, the shelter venue give you a return of 45% of what your revenues were as opposed to 20% is the most you will get from paycheck. So we're going to explain that, but the thing we need to understand is that this bill that was just passed by the Senate had some interesting features in it, but we're going to discuss that tomorrow. What essentially has happened is the bill now is in a conference committee, which means that the members of Congress who are part of the House of Representatives are going to have to look at what the Senate has appealed back or appealed off. And then if they can agree to that, the bill will be signed and then we'll see what will happen from that. So we're going to give you more details on that. But the shelter venues essentially are those who are in the hospitality industry and that would be things such as one that Mr. Gregor is open and also everyone who is essentially is in the, in the business of promotion, so we have that detail out for you. What is in the SBO bill that's before Congress now is about $15 billion for SBOs. On page three, when Commissioner Gaines raised a question, you'll look and you will see who can apply for the SBOs. You have to be in NA code 72, that's a five-digit code that essentially tells the Internal Revenue Service and others what you're doing. For example, if you were a painter or a sheet rock operator, you would have a NA code and that NA code will go into your tax return. And we, we will look at that. So there are seven venues that are eligible and we have that information for you when you look at that. You look on page four, you'll see all of the venues. Those are the only ones who can apply for the SBO grants. If you're not in one of those NA codes, then you cannot apply. If you are one of those venues, you cannot double dip, which means, we had a conversation with Mr. Gregor about this, if you apply for paycheck, you cannot get SBO. If you're in the paycheck program, you can double dip. The reason is because as I've stated, the SBOs get 45% of revenues, the paycheck only run to 20%. So you see there's almost 125% more with SBOs, but page seven outlines those for you. And when you look at some Mr. Lane's information, we're going to run through this quick because we appreciate the chair being so tolerant and doing this, but wanted to point out some things. On page eight through 12, you have every firm in the city of Alvin that receive a paycheck. Now some of our commission members have received this money and their name on there or they're indirectly associated with it. It's semi alphabetical, which means sometimes it appears to be alphabetic and then other times they'll bring a rope and dope in there and throw something that you did not expect. But there are five pages of every one, 179 loans that have been issued in Alvin and Door to County. So those who have benefited also declared or disclosed what that's up, you know, we brought this to you. Now, you'll see ones such as LRA and others, Alvin and Hinton there, but the interesting thing is out of those five pages, you cannot find one minority business. That's important. All right, we'll go on to page 13.
In Artesian Construction, a minority owned business?
Well, let me just say this, some things are questionable, I'll leave it there.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, one of the things, Chair, we told you before, the money's about to run out. Now you have all of this data, so I'll go on through it quickly. Almost $700 billion and all three stimulus bills is almost $6 trillion. We're going to explain tomorrow, how does Congress come up with that money? All right, on page 13, you see that data. On page 14, it shows that the average loan size was $107,000. Now that's for the paycheck program, this is not the SBO, do not get those confused. Page 15 gives another perspective on the distribution. Page 15 suggests that 51 million businesses or jobs at least have been saved by this program, but at a cost of $700 billion. Page 18 shows the data that what we brought you for, only $130 billion left and it's running out every day. That's why we were saying we need more workshops. On 131 billion, almost a trillion dollars, black businesses did not get any of it. Now I told you that we, this was since the earliest thing, we needed to do something. You do not see us enter this strata that we bring before you and you do not have this information. This is why we need a cabinet, public needs. All right, we'll look at page 19, this shows you the lenders who are making these loans. Page 20, look at the census strike. Again, you'll notice here 27% of the beneficiaries are low and moderate income businesses. Look who's getting a benefit, the big business, 73%. We look at census strike, page 20. We look at 21, this is breakdown of rural hub zones and Alvin has a hub zone that starts essentially at the county line as we come from west to east and go all the way out to the Marine Corps and then go south to Baker County. All that's a hub zone, which means there's a place where very few of these businesses are contacted or given an opportunity, economically or otherwise. You look at page 21 showing the breakout of the paycheck, looking at civic, religious and professional organizations. Page 22, when we look at the PPP loans for religious and civic organizations. Page 23 shows again the five largest banks who are making these loans. Page 24 gives us an idea of the lenders class and then 25 shows you the distribution by states and territories. And page 26 is what we're doing now with our Concede Code, Afram Tech and a plethora of other organizations to make this happen. We have to give some consideration to our tax structure and we're going to bring that tomorrow because we will have more time, but just a little tax 08 and 9. The one reason the US economy is in such a mess is because we, meaning the citizens, make it that way. What happens is the $7 trillion that these stimulus bills are costing has to come from somewhere. I mean, the government can print the money, but if it has nothing to back it up, is it worth anything? The problem is that wrecks the US economy, there are several things, but two or three. One of them was NAFTA, the other thing is automobiles. You see every time you and I buy a foreign automobile, you take seven jobs out of the US economy, every time. Take seven cars, if the average cost of the car is $50,000, what do you think is happening? That's the first reason this mess up. The second one is NAFTA. NAFTA goes all the way from Canada to Central America. What it did, it made possible for those entities in that venue not to pay a nickel in transfer taxes. They could do business and pretend it was made in America when it was not. But think about it, every time you buy that Nissan or that, whatever, whatever you can afford to buy, we, we have to start thinking about that. And the $7 trillion that the stimulus is costing, we're going to discuss that tomorrow, but in closing, I want to tell you one thing, there was a news story on that said that the IRS was behind by a year or so, maybe two years and that other things were happening, but it's a staffing problem that President Trump created because he sent half of the employees home, not only to IRS but other agencies as well. Other thing is that he created what's called four silos and he put a built-in deductible $10,000 on that. Now, as an individual through my vocation, I've been teaching tax accounting for 30, 35 years, but one thing that happened, when President Trump restructured the tax system in 2017, he created four silos, single, head of household, married, married father. You pay taxes based on which silo you were in and you can no longer deduct yourself, get that exemption for you or your dependents. If you fell into silo one, you paid taxes on everything above $12,000. If you were in silo two, you paid taxes on everything above $18,000. Silo three, you paid taxes of 12% on everything over $24,000. So he restructured the system and he put a built-in $10,000 deductible, which meant that unless you have $10,000 of mortgage interest, the property taxes, you cannot deduct. The silo is supposed to incorporate everything in there such as your dependents exemption, your personal exemption, et cetera. It is not there. That's why on the news story they were saying about half the people ending up owing taxes now, well, he restructured the system and that's federal law until December 31, 2025. We're going to discuss the details of this tomorrow at the workshop and thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for helping with Robert Cross Park. I see there's any questions, Chair.
Mr. Wright, before you go, what are your thoughts on the capital gains tax that's coming through?
I don't know.
On the capital gains tax from the Biden administration, you got thoughts on that?
Oh, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're asking.
What are your thoughts on the capital gains tax?
Well, the capital... Well, the, the capital gains is, is a beautiful thing because it allows you to invest, and then you pay a lower tax almost if it was a, a single individual. So the idea is not to have you pay ex- extraordinary, uh, taxes on an economic opportunity for a capital asset that you acquired, such as buying a house, and then you flip it, and then usually you would pay about twenty-seven percent tax on it. Now, it's down to the personal level, where it's no more than, uh, twelve percent. Capital gains typically the lowest tax that you have on return, so it, it is a good thing. That's not the reason for the mess we're in. The main is the restructuring of the tax system, and we have to stop. There's, there's nothing wrong with Volvo and all the Mercedes in our lap, but you send us taking seven jobs out of our economy. That's the real issue. So, but that's it. We're gonna, we'll discuss it in detail tomorrow.
Yeah, what, if I, if I may, Mr. Wright?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I certainly appreciate, uh, the information you always bring us. It is always very intriguing and very interesting. However, um, I, I do worry often, and particularly in this case that you're doing these workshops, uh, with the county's assistance, I worry how, um, we translate this really heady information, really high-level information that you always bring that is so interesting. How do you translate that to the everyday, ordinary person? And how do they get to understand this and apply it and make use of it? And I don't know whether or not, um, it's just my inability to, to understand how it translates to the everyday businessman. For instance, my brother has a very thriving business. I cannot imagine how he would benefit from this. It's really hard for me to understand how he would, you know? Uh, I don't know whether or not what you present is much more for people who make policy, or is it really, uh, for the benefit of e- everyday, ordinary businesses? And you don't have to answer that now. It's just something that, that at some point I'd love to understand from you.
Yes, ma'am. Will do. Will do.
Uh, Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones. Uh, you know, I, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm, I'm kinda sharing the same thing that Commissioner Gaines shares as well, but I, I, I hear you say that the, that the funds that, uh, uh, that, that were available, uh, none of the minority businesses were able to receive any of those funds. Uh, I just want, for my edification is that, is, were they aware of it? Why didn't they, uh, receive any of the funds? I mean, I'm su- I'm sure it was available for anyone. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to, to, uh, get educated on why they, why they didn't receive it.
They did receive funds. They received funds in that lower category, you know, the smaller amount of money, like twenty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever, because there's a category below that is like a hundred fifty thousand or less, and that's where all of our people got money, including our churches, you know? They all got a little bit of money here and there, but they just get the big dollars in those categories where you have to itemize the person who receives the money.
Okay, and for what reason, why did they not, uh, they didn't have enough? I'm just trying to...
Yeah, they didn't have enough. They're, they're not big enough, simply. They're really very small. Their payrolls are small.
What?
Mm-hmm. They only have, well, one or two people or whatever, uh, they operate out of their shop or whatever. You, you know the really small businesses with, uh, just a handful of employees.
O- okay, and, and Commissioner Jones, in, in addition to what, uh, Commissioner Gaines said, uh, we, uh, we did a presentation, uh, uh, three or four months ago, but, uh, Commissioner Gray and some others picked on it. See, we, uh, when I say we're referring to black or African-American, whatever, but not to use, uh, we fall into that Smokey syndrome when we were talking about this before. You see, according to the Bureau of Census, ninety-five percent of minority businesses do not have but one employee. That's the owner. And it's hard for you to receive this money if you're the only one in there, and you do not have a ten-nine-nine or W-2. I mean, it's just not gonna happen. And the other thing is, what we all know is the distribution of information. I mean, I go on the radio networks and talk about this, and it just depends on what radio station you listen to, but our problem is that, and then the third thing is know-how. Uh, people just do not know that if you get a ten-nine-nine, you can get the paycheck money, but as Commissioner Gaines said, anything under a hundred fifty thousand dollars, the SBO, look at that as peanuts. So we, we don't have time to go and put all this, all these names there, because it, it takes a lot of space in the cloud as well as into that data system. That, that's, that, that's the long shot.
But there is, there is a part of money that the smaller black businesses receive, and there's an amount to it. I don't have it in my head now, but I published it in the paper, that there is an amount that came to Dougherty County and Lee County that went to African, uh, uh, small businesses, uh, and to African-American businesses, but it's, it's just, uh, aggregated.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
All right, any other delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard at this time? All right, let's move on to zoning discussion. The estate of Donald W. LaVella Terry, owner and Lynn Marie Montgerard applicant, request to rezone three point zero acres from Ag Agricultural District to R.G., single-family residential district, county only. The property address is nine twenty-eight Gassert Road. The planning commission recommends approval. Ms. Teager.
Okay. Uh, again, this property is on Gassert Road. It's south of Fleming and north of Blue Springs Road, and it's, um, excuse me. It's, um, I'm sorry. It's part of, um, this doesn't work on here, but you see a horseshoe-shaped lot there, and then you have a blue, um, block right there facing Gassert. That's all one property right there, and they want to rezone three acres of it, and then after they do, if that's successful, they will take the remaining acreage and combine it with that lot you see in the middle. Uh, this is a family, and they're trying to settle their estate, and that's what it is, an approval to rezone to R.G. Right now, it's on to agriculture, and that's it. There's an area view of the property there, give you an idea. I might have a zoning map. No.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this matter?
I have just one quick question. What does that single-family county only mean?
Okay, that's only a district, um, that's in the county, and the purpose of it was to require a larger lot size. See, R1 only requires, um, twelve thousand eight hundred square feet, where this is the minimum's two acres.
Two acres on this one?
That's correct, it'd be, but they're, they would like to rezone three acres, make it a little bit larger.
All right.
I noticed, Mr. Commissioner, uh, Mr. Chairman, I noticed, uh, two members of the, uh, planning board voted no. I was just curious, uh, Ms. Teager, if, if you kind of know what their rationale was, why they voted against this?
Uh, the applicant was not in attendance, so they felt that they should table it and have the applicant, applicant come to the next meeting. Um, but my, um, I had tried to reach out to the applicant a couple of times, so what I told them is we don't know their situation. So, and it's pretty straightforward. It was similar to the case we had last month.
So they voted no because the applicant didn't come to the meeting?
No, the applicant did not come.
Okay.
I got one more quick one. Is it in the flood, it's in a hundred-year floodplain? Is it drained?
Uh, that, that property is right there, yes. Down on the corner there.
So the water, the water drains natural that way?
That's just how they have it mapped on the flood insurance maps. They just show that in the hundred-year floodplain.
And, but do, do they have, like, a bill of hire or anything?
Um, if they were to demolish the house and start over, yes. If the elevation certificate says that they, um, they don't meet our requirements, they would have to, three feet above the base flood elevation.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you, Ms. Teager.
Okay.
All right. Purchases, recommendations to accept the proposal, the amount of seventy-four thousand five hundred twelve dollars from building Wakeford and McGee Architects out of Albany, Georgia to provide professional architectural and engineering services. The services are provided for the development of the design plans and construction oversight for the Radiant Springs Master Plan, Phase One improvements as recommended of the Recreation Committee. Funding is available in clause five. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Uh, we're happy to bring this, uh, proposal forward to you all. Uh, one of the commission goals was to investigate and move forward with the next, uh, phase of Radiant Springs improvements, and this proposal is consistent with the Phase One recommendations from Ron Huffman that the commission, uh, voted on last year to implement the, if you will, the low-hanging fruit, uh, consistent of the, uh, electrical for the food trucks, as well as the structural improvements around the area next to the springs and, um, the kite canoe launch area. So this, this will consist of the architectural design as well as the engineering required, the structural engineering, and the surveying, and, uh, this is our first step, uh, in implementing that project, and we recommend approval.
All right, any comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Addison. And we're gonna move on to additional business, recommendation to declare the listed vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorizing disposal or sale of same via an online auction. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is our standard, um, quarterly, uh, surplus list, and we recommend to move forward.
Very good. Any comments, questions, or discussion to be announced? Let's move on. Recommendation to declare one, two thousand nine Peterbilt Lowboy tractor as surplus and authorize the sale in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars of the same to the Worth County Board of Commissioners. This request is made on behalf of Worth County Chairman Fred Dent and County Administrator Carl Rowland. Mr. Addison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this Lowboy tractor was scheduled to be, uh, surplus by a Public Works Department and replaced, and, uh, I spoke with County Administrator Carl Rowland last week, and we both feel like this is a, a fair deal, um, for both parties involved. We recommend to move forward.
I got a quick question, Mr. Chairman. I thought, I thought properties like this had to go through underwriters association or something?
Um, no, this is not having to deal with an accident. This is just a piece of equipment that we would surplus and sell normally. Uh, so this is a process to surplus and then sell it directly to the Worth County. This doesn't have to, to deal with insurance claims or anything.
Okay. That's, okay. Well, hopefully they can put it to use. Always happy to help out a neighbor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Addison. All right, proposed board appointments.
I apologize, I think this is not staying on.
Okay.
I'll speak a little bit louder. Um, good morning. Uh, we have two appointments, um, in front of you. Just want to provide a reminder for the Albany-Doherty County Land Bank, all of the applicants that are within the county. The county administrator provides those recommendations to the board for consideration, and those city appointments, the city manager provides those recommendations to the board. And, um, next week, for the tax assessors, if you do choose to appoint the applicant, there will be a resolution for appointment that's needed for that board.
Okay. All right. Um, any comments, questions, or discussion on those two items? The Albany-Doherty County Land Bank, which is one appointment for a two-year unexpired term, ending July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Incumbent Robert Middleton, Jr. has resigned, and Mr. McCoy has recommended applicant Jim Pace. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? All right, let's move on to the tax assessors board. One appointment for a three-year unexpired term ending December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Incumbent Jay Bruce Gunnels has resigned, one new applicant, Wayne Shaw. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item? If none, let's move on. Review the proposed intergovernmental license agreement between the Board of Regents and the University System of Georgia and Dougherty County relative to the ASU to downtown Albany multi-use Flint River Trail Project. Mr. Lee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone has an email copy of the, uh, license agreement, uh, between the Board of Regents and Dougherty County. Uh, in addition to that, I've handed out a hard copy to everybody that's here today, including the county, uh, administrator, the county clerk, and I have one available for, uh, Commissioners Jones and, uh, Commissioner Gaines up at the, uh, administration office. Anyway, I think everybody's pretty much familiar with this. It's, uh, uh, there are four agreements that we have to execute before we can build, have executed before we can build the, uh, all ASU to downtown Albany section of the Flint River Trails. This is one of about six sections in the, uh, Flint River Trails Master Plan, and I think you know that it, uh, the University of, uh, ASU's property that, uh, is the property that we're using that's between the river and the, um, and the, uh, athletic fields. That's the berm that goes between the river and the athletic field, and that's what we're talking about today with this license agreement between the university system and Dougherty County. And as the trail comes down toward Albany and the city of Albany, in the middle of downtown Albany, it leaves the berm, and it goes underneath the, uh, Oglethorpe Bridge, it goes underneath the Broad Street Bridge, and it, it comes up on the north side of the Broad Street Bridge, circles around, and then comes up to the path going along the north portion of the Broad Street Bridge into downtown Albany. So that's the section, and I think, as you recall, the University of Sys-, the University of Georgia, the University System of the State of Georgia set aside seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to help, uh, build and construct that trail system. The county, uh, has allocated a million two toward that project. The project has been designed by, uh, by Lanier Engineering and Kaizen Collaborative, and this is one, like I say, this is one of four documents that has to be signed in order to complete, uh, the connection of that trail and allow Dougherty County to build it out. One of the other, uh, one of the other leases that has to be signed to allow the county to go underneath the Broad Street Bridge is property owned by Attica, and, uh, we have, Attica has that lease agreement on its, uh, on its, uh, agenda coming up in the near future. Another piece of property that needs to be, uh, we need to have an easement to build on is owned by Beecham Properties. That lease agreement is in front of the owners of Beecham Properties, and they are saying that there'll be no problem in executing it, although I don't have it at the present time. Uh, the last, uh, easement that needs to be signed is with the city of Albany. We provided the city of Albany with all of the information that they need, along with a proposed easem- easement agreement, and they are, they are looking into the execution of that easement agreement. So once that's done, then this profit, this, this project can go out for bid. Uh, that's a lengthy document, and, uh, if there are any questions either today or in the future about that document, I'll be glad to talk with you about them. It'll be on the agenda next week for, uh, for your approval, if you are comfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any comments or questions for Mr. Lee? All right, very good. Next, recommendation to take appropriate action to either demolish or bring up the code. One purported dilapidated structure located at two-two-two-nine Duke, Duettman or Dweetman Drive, Albany, Georgia. Uh, Mr. Lee?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a burned-out house over on, and I don't know whether the pronunciation is Duettman or Dykman. Code enforcement pronounces it Duettman like you just did, but I'm not certain what, how to pronounce it. Maybe Commissioner Jones knows.
Yeah, we're, we're calling it, we're calling it Dykman.
That's what I've called it, but, uh, I was corrected by, uh, code enforcement and the chairman just called it Duettman.
I have no idea. I said Dweetman.
It's one of the two.
Anyway, we know what we're talking about.
Yeah. There's a burned-out house over on, uh, Dykman, uh, right. Uh, Dykman's a one-way street up and down, has some nice homes on it. The house has been there, it's been burned out for about over three years, I think, and code enforcement has gotten involved in it, and I've met with them, and, uh, I think we need to go out and take a look at that. Something needs to be done with that house. Uh, what we're asking here is that, uh, that code enforcement, under the resolution and under our bait, uh, uh, nuisance abatement resolution, go out and assess the value of that house, what it would cost to bring it up to code, and then if it, uh, costs more to bring it up to code than it's worth, then of course I'll file a petition in, uh, in the, in, uh, Superior Court, uh... code than it's worth, then of course I'll file a petition in, in, in Superior Court under our nuisance abatement resolution. Judge will in order it to be either brought up to code by the owner in a certain period of time or demolished by the county.
All right. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that item?
Uh, Mr. Lee.
Yes?
Uh, Mr. Lee. Commissioner Jones here. What is, what is the timetable on this thing? As you all know, the citizens over in that area, they have been, they've been trying to get this structure down for at least three years, and the, the young folks have used it for a playground and all these other things, and a lot of things in this thing. So what time is of the essence on this thing? You and I have spoken about it as well, and so if you can't give us a timeline about this, the citizens of, of that subdivision, they continuously called me and to want to know updated information on this. So I wanted to be able to provide and give concrete information.
Uh, which property is that again?
The one we're talking about, twenty-two twenty-nine Dykman Drive. What's the timetable on getting everything, through the course system and everything? Because they've been bothering with this thing well over three years.
Miss, I'm assuming you're asking me how long it's going to take?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's been out there four years like that, so I, let's say six months.
Thank you. That's a good, that's a good time, and they can have a nice area out there to look at by Christmas.
We have to give due process before we can go tear a house down. You've got to notify a lot of people, you have to advertise it in the newspaper, you have to afford a hearing for the people that are involved in it. We just can't go tear somebody's house down. There's a, there's a process that has to be followed under state law and under our nuisance abatement resolution. And it would take, you might be able to shorten that time, but I, but if they come up with a lawyer and they want to continue it, and we have to get in litigation with them, we could, we could be out there for a while.
Right, right. I, I, you know, I understand that, and I appreciate your effort in getting that thing going down, but that's three years' time, and that's three, those past three years, that's what, that's what's giving the people out there a hard burn. But anyway, I appreciate all you've done, and certainly you got it on the front burner now. It's been on the back burner for about three years, turned down low, so we got to get to that. Thank you, sir.
All right, very good. Um, Mr. McCoy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Want to remind everyone that there is going to be a recreation committee meeting immediately following this work session in room one-twenty.
Very good. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else?
Uh, nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gaines?
Um, yes, please. Mr. McCoy, um, I, I hope this is not a premature request, but at the appropriate time, could you give us a thorough briefing on what to expect from the COVID Relief Act? There's money, I believe, that will be coming directly to counties or local governments, and if, if you could kind of give us a hint or some idea of what we could expect in that briefing?
Yes, ma'am. The register hasn't come out yet, and we do anticipate receiving around seventeen million dollars, and it's my understanding that we have to spend it by twenty-twenty-four. But we'll provide more information as we receive it. But as you know now, that legislation is in the House, and once Congress gets finished and the president signs it, we'll get more information and certainly send it to the board.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And to add to that, they only approved three capital projects that could be done, and that was water, sewer, and broadband.
Well, how, how do we, seventeen million for us then, for those three projects? I mean, we don't have sewer. We don't have water.
No, ma'am. You can only, you can only spend those capital improvement projects for that. You can do other things with the money, budget stabilization, other things.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was asking, that we understand all of the ramifications.
Right, but I think the Senate has taken out a lot of things in it, and so the House is going to approve it and look at it. It's in committee right now.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, very good. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Commissioner Newsom?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gray?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Edwards?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson?
I said enough. See you guys at recreation committee.
Your adjournment.
My fellow citizens of Dougherty County, we continue to make strides fighting the spread of the COVID-nineteen virus here in our community, but we need your help. If you or someone you know is eligible to receive the vaccine, as your county commission chairman, I'm asking you, please consider getting the vaccine. Together, we can fight the spread here in Dougherty County and make us happier, healthier, and stronger.